Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Have a roll call.
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince. Alderman Wolfman.
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Very good. Like an approval of the agenda?
Second.
Call in favor?
Right.
Alright, it takes us down to personal appearance. Tamper, you're up. With, is it Hawk's Child? How do you spell, how do you say that?
It's Hope.
Hope, okay.
That's what they always told me.
Okay.
It's like, it's Hope Shield Bloom.
Okay.
Well, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tamper.
I go by Tammy. Tammy Alsop, I'm a partner at Hope Shield Bloom and Company. I've been over, I've been there for over 25 years. I've been auditing for over 30 years, so I shouldn't date myself, but that's okay. I love to audit. We do, we do a lot of municipalities. We do water districts, sewer districts, fire districts. We audit a lot of different municipalities. We do tax returns, of course, corporate partnerships, anything you can think of there. But I mainly deal in the audits. We actually have two main partners that deal with the audits, so we actually have two to three teams of auditors that we have. So, it's a big, it's not a real big firm, but it's a, it's a good sized firm. And I want to say I'm very happy to be considered for the audit, for the auditing services for the city. And I hope we can please you. And of course, remember, we work for the board. So, if the board has any problems or questions, please do not hesitate to ask. While, you know, while we're on site, or even when we're offsite, we have emails, cellphones, however you'd like to get ahold of us. And, and I think we'd be starting with Kim and Sue. Pam, I'm so sorry. Pam, to, to get things going, if you approve our contract. Does anybody have any questions of me or my part?
Sure. Tammy, one of the things I didn't see really covered in the bid and stuff, and one of the things that we've always kind of enjoyed previously and stuff is, maybe a couple of times a month, if a subject came up new to us or something, we were able to have an open communication with our auditor and not be charged every time. It was included in the cost of the overall audit.
Sure. And that's the same way I do. That's the same way we do. Because I'd like to talk about it ahead of time, especially say if you were gonna, I don't know, get rid of your water and sewer, or sell it, or something, or, you know, do something else, and you want to know, how is it going to affect something? Or if you want to issue bonds, or something like that, how will that affect us? Anything like that, if you want to talk about how the rape covenants are, you know, things like that, anything. Because if I can help you understand, then you can help me do my audit. Because if it's done properly, then my, it makes my job easier, too. So, sure, I mean, we're open to anything throughout the year like that, yes, and there's no cost for that.
I appreciate that. And like I said, that's something we've always had, and I didn't see really covered in the document, you know, that spelled it out and stuff. But, and like you said, I mean, I've been a part of audits and stuff for a number of years, it's always information going both ways.
Right.
You know, to help each other or have something, not to get a question.
Oh, right.
Right.
Right, that, right. Makes it easier for both of us, and that's the way we like to do it. I also like to present the financial statements. I think it said we do present the financial statements, and at the end of December, or something like that, I think is what it, something like that, or first part of January. I do like to present the financial statements, especially the first year. And then, kind of, then if you don't want me here the next year, that's fine, you know, the city administrator, of course, are, is very capable of doing it. I just like to do it the first year, you know, kind of have everybody understand what we do, how we do it, and things like that, so.
So, if you wouldn't mind providing our people their phone number, contact people, or cell number, whatever we need.
Sure.
You know, to do that, I think we'd all be free.
Sure, I'll give that to Pam, and we'll get that, I'll give all that information to them.
Okay.
And you'll have that, so that's not a problem at all. No problem.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Scott Martin's report. Martin's not here.
He's here. He, on his report, he's got, we all have it, Chadwell Lane Project is complete. I think it turned out very well, so I've got a lot of good comments on it. He's prepared a contract for five acres on Progress Parkway, contingent on rezoning for a two-unit villas. Discussed utility easements with Piva. They are concerned about Citizens Electric easements, put them in contact with Ron Klein, which, that's all been resolved, and I understand, got an email, a text from him today. We'll be closing on that property either the 21st or 22nd of this month. So, attended, he attended a community service forum, Levy District. He also did some research, financial reserve policies of Government Finance Officers Association. I know there's been some questions about our reserves, and he says in his report that the Board of Aldermen can adopt a written financial reserve policy. So, that might be something we want, this board might want to look at, look into, so. And then he also prepared advertisement for exterior waterproofing if building remodel is approved. And we'll be talking about that building remodel here in old business, okay? Yes, sir?
On behalf of one of the businesses down Chadwell Lane, I'd just like to thank the board and the city's participation in that and stuff, that it was very well done, and I think it's very safe.
Very nice.
Jokers did a great job on that. I think they did an excellent job on that project. Would you say so, Gary? Absolutely. I think if the project was done well, was overseen, you know, several people, even the board members looking and asking questions, so that's really how you need to do that. And I think it just turned out fantastic.
Yeah, they kept us informed of, you know, when, what, where, and.
You know, it didn't take all that long, you know, it just moved right along, so. Alrighty, any other questions about Martin's report? Alrighty, takes us to the staff reports, and that brings up Gary.
Once again, mowing weeds and, we're close to the end of that. We did some spraying of weeds on where some of the overlay projects are going. Put up and took down the tent a couple of times. We got all the pavilions in the park painted. Repaired defense at Valley Spring Park. Cut trees and brush along the walking path through the park and some on Main Street. Trimmed the bushes around the big pavilion. We planted 14 trees in the park. Heather had secured a grant from the Gardener's Club, I believe, and four trees were purchased out of that. And we purchased 10 more out of the park board's money that they get to spend. And so, we got 14 new trees planted up there. We've been cleaning up the undergrowth and brush out of Valley Spring Park. Did downtown cleanup a couple of times for events. There's a storm drain up off Westwood Drive that takes on more water now, since that road's been redone, and it washed it out back on the property line, so we rip wrapped that. Did a lot of work around the brush site. We got pretty well caught up with Alliance on their water leak patches. We did La Hay North Fourth, Jefferson Merchant, and 10th Street. Got the pond fountain going again, and we put a new backboard and then brim up at Pinkley Park.
Was the property owner on Westwood, was that efficient for him?
Yes.
I got a question. Now, I know this, we got a big patch that's got to be done here on.
On Fourth?
And now this is going to get overlaid.
Right.
Will that get, patch get, because there, I was, somebody brought it to my attention on, there's some, there's been some dips left, these streets were water standing, that, it'll be leveled out, won't it, will be filled first to the.
They're going to dig it two inches when they do the leveling wedge, and then they'll put the overlay over that.
Okay. Because that's a pretty thoroughfare. We don't want to dip in the street.
Yep. And that was all compacted when it was put in, so.
Gary, when we have years like this year for mowing and weed eating and stuff, and I'm sure that puts you behind in your other projects very much, can we come up, I mean, some kind of a program where we hire an extra person or two to weed eat, so.
That's, that's you guys to give me the money.
I mean.
We hired, we hired three summer help.
Right.
And then.
But I mean, we had a few years here in a row.
We didn't have them this year.
Yeah, we had three high school. But, you know, once they went back to school, the second week in August, we still mowed through September every week.
Yeah, I think we need to visit that every year when we have this situation and see what we can do. I mean, can that be handled with a budget amendment, or?
I'm sure it could. I got another question for the board. We, you know, we're not going to do, we're not going to put several tons of asphalt on Cedar Lane because of the water project we got. And Gary brought it to my attention, that he does a lot of work on South Cabori down there by the, that's his, you know, by Stupi's.
By Union Hall.
Off the 10th Street, by the Union Hall, which gets a lot of traffic. And he suggests we put that asphalt, have that road done, because we spent a lot of time patching that old road. You know, and it still could be saved, and it'd be a good use of that. I know it's a sharp street, but it's, but the traffic it gets down there, I think it's just wise to do that. And I wanted to, I didn't want to tell them to do that, I wanted to bring it to the board and see if that'd be okay with the board, and put your thoughts on that.
No mall part?
Yeah.
You know, it's some prices and stuff, but even on this side of the railroad track, there's a pretty good dip right there by Stupi's and stuff that catches some of the vehicles and trailer tums and stuff as they go across it.
I don't guess the railroad's ever going to fix the crossing.
No.
I come through there tonight, that's terrible.
It's a, it's a tough deal on railroad. We've had meetings about the crossing. But that's okay, Gary will go ahead and, I'll go on your expertise on that, I agree with that.
For the bid for the tonnage, so we had that same big rate where there's instead using that one street.
Yes, we're using.
Any other questions?
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary.
Kenny? See, you got a big event coming up on Sunday.
Yes, we do. Been a busy couple of weeks getting ready for 125 years as a fire department.
You believe that?
Should have your report in front of me, under staffing, since the time I gave this to you, I still have one person that I need to sit down and discuss his future with us. He's not sure if he wants to stay with us. And I also found out somebody that I hadn't seen in a while has moved out of town, so I've lost another one. We are still open to anybody's suggestion on how to get volunteers, it doesn't have to come from within our department, so if anybody has ideas on how to get volunteer firemen to sign up, bring them to us, we'll be glad to listen to anything. The warranty work was done on our ladder truck, and it fixed all the problems that we had, and I didn't put it on here, but we did take it to a fire engine rally up in Jefferson County, which is an annual event, which is kind of like a networking for fire departments, see what equipment is out there. And we've gone up there several years and brought awards back. We also brought an award back this year for the truck. We didn't get the aerial award because we went up against Crystal City's 1.5 million dollar ladder truck, but we came back with the judges' favorite, they liked our truck best over a lot of them, so we did come back with an award for the truck, so it's well-designed, and people appreciate what we have. The big thing we've got going on right now, like the mayor said, we have our 125th coming up this weekend. We do have some demonstrations, and we'll have a short ceremony. I've talked to state fire marshal, I think he intends to make some kind of presentation on behalf of the state for the history of the department. Our mayor's agreed to say a few words to ours. As much as I hate to do it, I'm probably going to have to say a word or two there, too.
What time is that presentation?
The actual ceremony will start around 12:30. We'll have, the doors open about 11 o'clock with tours of the firehouse and the equipment and things. A short ceremony between 12:30, we figure it'll take about an hour. And after that, we got a couple of demonstrations planned on extrication tools and the use of the ladder truck, rescuing somebody off the tower and a few things like that, to show people what, what we have and what our capabilities are. Assistant Chief Swint has done a lot of research on our history, so during our ceremony, he will talk, cover some of our high points in the history of our department, as much as we can find out. Unfortunately, we didn't make it for our 100th because it was right after the flood of 93, and we didn't find out about it till after, but we're trying to make a big deal out of the 125th, we think it's important. And the big thing we have going on this weekend, in case you haven't made aware of it, it's Fire Prevention Week. We've got all kinds of PRs going, we've got guys going to schools during the week, I've got another one to do tomorrow, and then we've got two events in the park that we'll have trucks at, so we're doing a lot of public relations, getting out where people can see us.
Wanted to make a comment, I did get to go to the show that Kenny talked about, I did get to see the 1.5 million dollar truck sitting alongside of ours, but I did get to talk to the principal of the company up there, and I just asked him, you know, dollar for dollar, how did we do? And it was a very good compliment to our staff and stuff of how they researched, how economically it was done, that it was done with all of the right things. We spent our money wisely, and I was pretty proud of that, but thank you.
We appreciate that. We try to do the best we can while we're given. Any questions? Hope to see a bunch of you there, then.
Thanks, Kenny.
You've got my report there. There wasn't a Heritage Commission meeting in September, but there will be one in October, unless the applicant, applications are withdrawn, so we'll have a meeting, not this coming Monday, but the following. Rental Housing Advisory, we'll have another meeting probably towards later end of this month. If you remember the last one, we had landlords and gave them some time to give feedback, or ask any further questions they had, though. They had quite a few questions that night, it was almost two hours, so it was a good meeting. The rest, I was just going to go down to the bottom on the property maintenance focus. I mean, each, each month I give you an update on these numbers. We're down to about 22 that have different variations of plans. Some of that is, you know, just need to paint to something more drastic than that. But we did perform an abatement this past week, so if you want a communication when something like that occurs, I can certainly send it out to you. But that's not the first one, probably just the most highest, highly visible one, so. Any questions on any of that?
I got a question, Martin. What about what's left?
Well, Martin, I drafted a letter to go towards the junk that's there now. And Martin told me to hold it because he had heard from some board members that there was concern, but that is the next step. I had the letter drafted and ready to go, but he wanted to make sure that the board wanted to go forward with this nuisance abatement. I'm still working with the owner to try and get him to take care of it, and if you're not unaware, I've worked with him a long time before we got to the abatement last week. And now we have the junk. The vegetation just requires a public hearing, so that's why it happened without kind of what we did for Deborah Gag, that's different, that's property. So, if, if we go the nuisance abatement for the junk, we'll have to have a public hearing, if he doesn't address it on his own, which is doubtful. Yes, sir?
Couple of months ago, I asked you about, you know, we spend money, we don't get the collector back, and you said you and Martin were working on some way of collecting money, maybe?
I said Martin was.
Anything on that?
I mean, there are different routes to go.
Well, we know the county's not going to do it.
I think Mark's talked about actually taking it to court, and he spoke to that a couple of months ago, and then we, we put a lien on the deed.
How much money have we spent on this latest one, Dave?
Just last week?
Right.
The bill was 3,000, and then I add in eight hours of a police officer and five hours of my own time.
Well, what all of it's done?
I mean, all the vegetation that was a nuisance was eliminated.
I thought that the, in that bill, that was already, in that 3,000, was the police officers.
No, sir.
No?
That's the bill for the contractor who did the work.
Okay, I looked, I thought, I looked at that, and I didn't.
Wow, that's more we spent on gigs, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't know how it could be for just the vegetation that much.
Well, there's, how many loads were hauled away? About 21 loads of vegetation were hauled from that property.
Oh, my God.
And if we do further clean up, how much more, were you looking?
Wouldn't be that much. I mean, it'd be a dumpster and some folks to put trash in the dumpster.
What about the vehicles that are sitting there, though? Where do they go?
The vehicles would be hauled away. We did do that at the Gag property, if you remember.
Yeah.
The gentleman, Mr. Stupi hauled that away and did not charge the city.
That's, yeah, it's still city.
So, if you want me to continue to pursue that nuisance, I will put that letter in the mail.
I want to pursue the nuisance. You know, it's just a matter of, you know, because, well, what I'm concerned about now is, is.
Recouping?
Not recouping, recouping is always a concern, but what's going to happen when things start growing again? That's, it's just, it's, unless something's done with the property, every year, we're going to be paying somebody to cut grass and trim trees. I mean, it's not going to be on the scale of what we had, but. But right now, it's, it's, it's an eyesore now because you can see all that junk laying all around, it's, you know, to me, it's the same issue.
Mark, do you know if Martin had any other solutions on the recouping besides the court?
I have not talked to anybody about the nuisance, there's not a selection effort since the last time we addressed it at a meeting.
Okay.
I want to know why we couldn't turn it into a collection agency.
Well, you can, maybe it's the, you can, it's a short answer for one, too, but, you know, those are demand letters, and you fortunately can file a lawsuit. But they're going to charge at least 50% as a contingency fee, or something like that, it's a great deal. So, I mean, it's, it's all about a cost benefit analysis. All these nuisance abatement issues are always cost benefit. Has it gotten to the point where the city's just willing to pipe the bullet and pay the upfront cost to remove the problem? Because that's what cities have to do. And then, you know, do what you can to get the money in the back end, and we can file a suit against anybody to enforce our lien, there's always an option. First of all, I wanted to go through the collectors because it doesn't cost us anything, so the fight is there for them. But we have a new agreement, and we're going to let you get it, that's fine. So, we just have to decide, you just have to decide as a board, you know, what you will pay to deal with these derelict properties, and then hope they'll, either, most cities will leave those liens just active until the property's going to be sold, and then you collect on it at the closing, because it's a lien on the property, and you're a title company, and it's not going to issue title insurance unless that's paid. And a lot, a lot of times, these derelict properties, they go for tax sales, and then a lot of times, cities would just agree to waive them if somebody's coming in to buy it and develop it and clean it up. Those are all financial decisions for the city to make in the future.
Are you, are you dealing with whoever he's, whatever it is with the state that's helping him?
There is no such situation.
Yeah, that's what I thought, Jimmy, there is, I thought, Mary Jo Raimer got involved in it, but not.
Voluntarily.
Voluntarily.
Yeah, and I have been working with her on the junk now, too, because she has a relationship with this individual.
Yeah.
But no, I definitely.
No, no professional? Okay.
So, is the letter a notice of violation and intent for us to sell?
The letter I have is, is a courtesy letter.
Okay.
But it, it, I've already sent courtesy letters, as you're probably well aware. This one says, I don't know if I put 10 or 14, but it would say 10 or 14 days, then we'd issue the notice of violation and go down the actual abatement path.
But Mark, in this lien process, though, I mean, if you go to the point of filing lien, you have to go back and perfect that lien?
Right.
And then also, you have to hope, when it is sold, in a foreclosure situation, you have to be prepared to buy that property or bid to protect your lien.
Well, this is essentially a tax lien, so we have priority over some, it depends on what occurs. But, yeah, it is quite, if it's a tax sale, a lot of times, you're just going to buy that, you know, buy the product, and then make a tax, because this is a special assessment lien. So, so, yeah, I mean, the, the, my advice is, if you're going down this path of making nuisance planning, aren't getting money back. If, if it's a big enough issue, and it's worth suing more than perfecting the lien, being a simple judgment and doing execution of the property, then you can do that, but most of times, no. You know, a couple thousand here, a couple thousand there, it's just like paper. That's the way I look at it, as far as an expensive city, because if you don't take care of these derelict properties, it reduces the enjoyment of any value community, and it's a hard reason why people have cities, so we can address these, so they can not have a senior neighbor to evade a nuisance.
Can we include that terminology in his letters and stuff, a possible lawsuit?
Well, I think, well, I mean, if, if the notice of abatement and potential hearing isn't going to motivate you, which says if you don't abate it, you're going to have this hearing, you're worried about it, but a lien in your house, if that doesn't get involved in, it's pretty clear that it's, that they're going to have costs incurred when you send that notice. I don't know what, I haven't seen his letter.
I'm very clear that if you don't abate this, we're going to go down this path, and there's going to be either citations and fines for a ticket, or the cost of abatement. And in the three instances, besides one was with a bank, I verbally said, you're going to receive a bill for this if you don't get it done.
I just think the more we can put in a letter to them.
It's abundantly clear. There's no, there's no confusion about they're going to get a bill for this, you know, this is a lien on the property, and, you know, sometimes people are just not in a position to do anything about it. I don't know anything about this, I'm not familiar with this property. Mike, it's common to have somebody with mental health issues who got physical ailments, or isn't it issues, they just don't, you don't think of your stuff, perceive it like an issue, and it's going to be.
Of these settled properties, how many do you think we're going to go through this again?
Hold on, tick.
It looks like we're getting to where everybody says, I'll just let the city take care of it, and, you know. If that's where we're going, then that's fine.
Maybe, I mean, I, I can't guess, Jimmy, but maybe one, the others, you know, I mean, I'm not trying to speak for this board, but I don't want to go down the abatement process with someone who has some chipping paint. If you want me to, I will.
No, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about like, what, 061?
These, maybe one. There's another one that is working slowly, like at a sloth's pace, but there's work being performed. This property, I mean, there was very little work performed, and when the work performed, it was like it created more of a nuisance. They just dropped the branch in the ground and leave it. So, and I, I mean, I'm sure you all are aware, I worked with this individual a long time to try to get it taken care of before it came to this.
I did, too.
And many other people.
David, I just want to ask a quick question, I'll probably have to ask our lawyer. If a person gets a bill from the city for water, and they don't pay it, they run the risk of getting cut off. If they get a bill from the city for this, and they don't pay it, could we cut their water off?
He doesn't have any water.
No water at all?
No.
He does not live there anymore.
He doesn't live.
The building's been deemed uninhabitable.
So, the city has. So the city has nothing going there?
Not for that property. As a, I understand what you're asking, though. You know, in fact, the three that have been abated, so you're familiar with the gag property.
Yes.
There's no water there.
Hmm.
This one, no water, and the other one is in foreclosure.
Thank you, sir.
Did, uh, did we know, did you relatively know how much of it was in cost before we?
Sure, I asked seven different companies to give me prices.
And that's, is, uh, as I, I said per the email, I would definitely prefer if we get notification before the abatement process starts, that would be fantastic.
When you say the process, you mean the day that it's going to happen physically, I assume?
As soon as you know that it's going to happen?
But not the process of sending a letter.
No, 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 just, just as soon as you know that, that you're going to go out there and get something done. So obviously, you got bids, you're done, so just some notification on, on that. I'd like to shift, does anyone have any questions on that? Because I want to shift gear back really quick, but you got some on that.
I, I just, didn't we at some point in time discuss having a work session? Once our contract with the county collector changed, we discussed having a work session to sort of discuss these kinds of situations and the steps we want to take.
Well, that was, it was an email that we got from Mark, and he thought we maybe could get together and do that.
Okay.
I think we should.
Is that something everybody agrees that we ought to have a special session and go over our options? Okay.
Well, I think we need to overturn it.
Just let me, let me know if it's a little bit.
Do you have another question, Brian?
Yeah, as far as the rental housing advisory, uh, what's, what's the process going on with that? Like you, so you guys are just trying to come up with, with new regulations around rentals? Or what, what are you guys trying to do?
Focus right now on pre-HUD mobile homes. We did some other work with rentals. If you remember, we worked with Citizens to get a list of when electricity's changed in rental units. So we've done some other work, but right now, focused on pre-HUD mobile homes, which that group, uh, has identified as one of the problems in town. And so right now, they've got four documents, uh, they're looking at, that we went over with the landlord. So I went over them with the committee. Then we had a landlord meeting, went over them with the landlords that showed up. All the landlords that are registered were invited. And then gave those folks another four to five weeks, which lapses this week, to give me any more feedback or questions. I've had three phone calls, one asking about a specific window, which I handled, and two, uh, from citizens who live around mobile home parks who are in strong support of putting some more ordinances in place.
I guess the problem with, with these is just the overall, uh, looks of the properties, or is that what we're trying to resolve?
Looks might be a side part of it, but it's health and safety and security.
Let me share something with you. This is a real life story that I'm involved in. What's happening is, is we have some people that own trailers, older trailers, and they're giving, giving them to folks. You know, because if you, if somebody moves in or wants to move in, now the electric company, we know, and the trailer's got to be inspected. And they get inspected, and there's a lot of expense to fix it. Well, you think about one of these old trailers, you don't, you're not going to fix it. So what they've done is given them away. Now, I know of one trailer that sits over by the Wilmar that I had somebody bring me. I knew the guy that owned it. He give it to, he gave the trailer to somebody else I knew with the title. And then this, uh, this guy gave the title, sold the trailer for five hundred dollars to another couple. And so I asked the guy, can I send David over there to look at this trailer? Well, he said, that's fine. And I said, I don't want you to take this trailer thinking you're going to be able to live in it. Because when you go to turn the electric on, you're going to see somebody from the city show up over there. But we did an inspection on that trailer, and there's a long list of things that the trailer could not be, it was inhabitable. And here is a person that, that can't afford it anyway, is going to try, have to try to, 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 to fix it, which he's not going to be able to because they don't have the finances to do it. And the same thing could happen with, it's happened to a house or two in this, in this area, where it's been given to somebody that doesn't have the means to keep it and fix it. You know, and, and now we can inspect, now we're going to, might find more of it. So, and then, and then you have to look out for the safety, and you have a lot of children living in these places. And we got a lot of good landlords in this town, we really do. We have a lot of good properties and good landlords, but, and some of these older trailers are, they're, they're still good, but they're, they're hard to maintain and manage, you know. And that meeting was good, I sat in on that meeting. We had some landlords, and they were concerned, but they were also willing to work to keep their properties up. So I was really encouraged with it.
They had some good feedback, and that group, that rental housing advisory, I mean, they're trying to balance the needs of the safety, health, and security of the individuals who Mayor's talking about, along with, you know, landlords. I mean, they're, they, they're there to make a profit off of rent, but they also have to maintain those structures. And some of those structures, some of them, not all of them, but some of them, for lack of a better term, have lived their life. I mean, they were built in nineteen seventy-two, nineteen seventy-four, and they are in poor shape. The one that the mayor spoke to, I mean, the bathroom vanity was held up by two-by-four studs. The water heater was completely rusted on the bottom. I could put my foot through the floor. There's more of those out there in this city. And people are living in them.
I, I watched the meeting, it was a really informative meeting. And is there a way you could, uh, which I'm sure I'll see it, but just in case, email me when that's scheduled?
Absolutely.
Because I would, I'd definitely like to attend.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, absolutely. There's also, I think, I think, Jimmy, are you the older man at RIM?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I definitely would.
Brian can sit in with us.
No, I'd love to, like I said, I didn't know about the last one, otherwise I would...
Well, we ought to all be concerned about that because it's, eventually, we're going to be right where we're at here. We're going to have something that, what is it going to cost to get a mobile home hauled off of, get rid of it? Well, three to five thousand dollars, really, to get a dumpster to do...
Some of those have been hauled off in the past couple of weeks.
Yeah, and we had some.
I've seen them leaving town. And that, I just want to be clear, my goal isn't to push all these out of town.
No.
But it's to make them healthy, safe, secure. And one of the ordinances states that they're, they won't be allowed in the city any longer, any pre-nineteen seventy-six ones. That'll be up to you to adopt, but, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
How did you know?
So Dave, retracing, did you need anything from us as far as moving forward on this?
What I'm hearing on the nuisance piece of it is to move forward.
Okay, so make sure everybody's good.
Okay. Did you have any questions on the later ordinance?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Eric's not going to speak about the, the discussion about patrol cars. It's not going to be on. We'll move forward. Take it there's nobody here for public comments. The consent agenda?
On the consent agenda, I forgot to put the closed session minutes from the last meeting, so I'll include that for approval at the next meeting. I apologize.
Most of it approved.
Second.
All in favor? Takes us to old business. I talked to Martin, Chief had called me this week, of where we're at with this rehab project. And I talked to Martin about it and getting ready to move on this, but there's some, there's a little bit of suspect stuff going on. And it's not, nothing that anybody's done illegally or anything like that, but there, there's some things that don't look good to me. For one thing, we, when we started this project, we had in mind that this was going to be a courtroom. We're going to, it wasn't going to be a courtroom, and we were going to rearrange it and do the board. And we had a whole different, when we bid this thing out, the first bid on this was for a lot of stuff that we didn't need anymore. And then we, we did have two bidders, we had Donzie bid on it, and then, who was the other one that bid?
Centermark.
Okay, they'd bid on it. And then the, that, Donzie come in, it was a low bidder, but we decided that, well, we weren't going to do all this, so we rebid it. And I don't know if that was right, you know, without having somebody come in and, and look at it and get a chance at it, you know. And then we talked about, then we, the, the process got brought up about the basement. We got water in the basement, why are we fixing it up here when we got a problem with the basement? So we decided we're going to have some people look at the basement, get some bids, or, so we applied for, Martin tried to get ahold of Healtech and somebody else. And apparently, nobody wanted to come and look at it, so Donzie put a bid in on the basement, patching this wall of the basement. But, and I was talking to Martin, but we never did truly bid that out, that project out. So we couldn't, I really, so I, I'm just saying, I, I would need to regroup here. I, I'm, I'm to the point to where, and then, and then with I, with me, and then I was the understanding, too, that one of the points was to, you know, put some new carpeting down. Well, now we're not going to do anything in City Hall with the carpet here, lights, LED lights, which would make sense. We're not doing that anywhere, we're just going to do, we redesigned, we're going to do the police area and some improvements in here. So I, I'm not ready to move, I'm not, I'm not comfortable putting my name and stamping it the way it's going down this line.
You know, Paul, I want to add to that, this is not a bid. This was some cost value estimating based on our request and stuff, so this is not a bid. You know, but second of all, the problem with going through that route and stuff, we don't have a document. We have a document that spells out a lot of stuff. What are we going to do? Go back to an architect and spend more money to get that document revised?
I, I don't, that's my point, yeah. We spent quite a bit of money with an architect.
Yeah, we spent a lot of money with an architect and stuff. We have to go back and revisit that to get a clear document to pass out to people to get a bid. And I, I'm not in favor of that, but I just don't see it. After the last meeting, when we went over that, I was expecting there to be some, some sort of, another meeting to discuss amongst each other, uh, and Martin and Eric, you know, about that. We did a little there, but I mean, obviously, speaking without the contract there is always convenient. And, uh, so we can discuss amongst each other what we want to do, and that never happened. There just hasn't been any direction in this, this whole process. And, uh, the waterproofing thing is certainly important as well, but once again, you know, there was, there was never a meeting to set up to discuss it. It was just out and done. Basically, I guess what I'm trying to get at here is, we need to have more committee meetings in, in regards to this situation, too.
Well, I think that the problem you had, too, Brian, is this all started before you became, came on the board. Mike's new, and now what's going to happen in April of next year, we're going to have new board members, so...
That's right. That's right. We need to get it done now.
We need to get this done. I would love to see this board, before next April, make some decisions on what direction and what we're going to do here at City Hall. I don't know if that's possible, I, it's already October, I don't know if it's possible, but I would sure like to see that move along here.
You may not be able to get it done, but you can certainly document. And I think that's the problem, we have a project that's running amok, there's no documentation. So if we reset, we go back, define a statement of work, create that, create an RFQ, standardize the process, solicit bids, and we document the whole time, if we're not here in April, somebody's going to come in the door and they're going to have that documented.
Now, the problem with that, does anybody realize how much time people have spent putting this together already? And we're going to ask them to go back? I mean, I'll be honest with you.
If they want to do business, we're going to ask them to go back and, and do it.
I don't know if I want to be a part of that committee, then, I mean, I just...
Well, I really, I really, with you, I'd rather you not be part of it.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. You asked me to.
I did, I asked you to, but because of your, your material, and, and even that, I've thought about that, it don't, and I, and I'm not saying that...
No.
And I, I don't see where there could, there could be a conflict, but it's, you know, there's nothing ever done. But like I say, with, I'm to the point, and I don't like it, even if it, if it looks fishy or looks funny, I don't want to be, put my name on it. Because I just don't, I don't, I do that all the way across the board, I don't...
You know, Jimmy, you've been in construction a number of years. Were you comfortable with that meeting? Where we got this document?
No. Federal government never operates that way. You, you either take their bid or you take no bids.
Right.
And should we went back to the other bidder, probably? But I think we're to the point now where I'd just like to make a motion, we just scrap what we got and have another meeting and come up with something. I don't know. Do we want to even do anything here? Do we want to spend that kind of money? This is going to take, that's what the board's got to decide.
I thought we decided that when we went ahead with the plans.
Well, that's what we decided when we thought it was going to be a hundred and eighty thousand, Bob.
Right.
And when it come in at three hundred, semi-thousand, nobody liked the bids, so...
Well, nobody liked the cost of that.
Right.
But, you know...
And then we kept paring it down, paring it down, and...
It's a whole new scope now.
And, and it was all, a lot of it was due security and, and for the...
Well, yeah, and I think that still got left in there, the security of it, that got left in.
I don't know if we can divide this into several small projects?
I think it was discussed that it'd just be, it's going to be all one job, would be much easier and convenient, and, and while everything is...
I think it'd be cheaper, too.
And, and cheaper, yeah, right. That was discussed as well. So...
I don't know.
I mean, a few more work sessions or, or committee meetings.
I agree with you.
I mean, I, I, it's got to be done. I mean, where, where we're sitting at right now is not a good spot with the project. I mean, I, I think moving, I think moving, it needs to be done, and we need to move forward with it. But we, where we're, with the information that we have and where we're sitting at right now, as you already discussed, it, it's just not a good spot.
Well, I talked to Don down there, we're, we're dealing with this wall over here, and then Eric says it's leaking over there.
Yeah.
And then Don tells me that it's weeping up through the floor. That's where he had an incident down there a couple of weeks ago, and he said the floor was wet. Now, and he says, well, sometimes it, it weeps up through that tile floor, you know, so I don't know how you stop it. There's a light, I mean, I don't know. So that's what he told me.
What was that?
Right, well, you come down right in the middle there, out from his office to the right, not where you guys' tables set up, off, off this way, right out in the middle, and then back by a pole back there where the light is, it was wet. I don't know, it could have been condensation, I don't, I don't know. The lighting is terrible down there, and there's stuff everywhere. So that's a contributing factor to all of it, so...
Well, I made a motion, so...
I, I would second that motion.
What's the motion?
What was the motion?
What was the motion?
To cancel the deal with Donzie and just start over from scratch.
And are we forming a committee, then?
And then...
Think we should.
I, I recommend that we also document a formal process for contracting. So how do we gather bids?
We don't have a contract with Donzie. We don't have nothing, there's nothing contract.
There's no action needed to be taken, because you want to express the intent or the...
That's, that's all I wanted.
Only that personally, is that what the board wants to do? But what we're, what we're going to do is, we're going to start, start from scratch.
So rebid the entire thing? What if, what if...
I don't know, I, I guess what we got to do is figure out what we want to enact.
What about, what about the, I don't, I don't want to jump the gun on, on that yet. I mean, we could, we could certainly do that after maybe two weeks or something like that. But we, how much money did we spend on, on the engineer to get this thing done?
Twenty-seven.
Twelve thousand? Twelve thousand? Yeah, I would, if we scrap this, does that become irrelevant?
It's still there, the plans, we paid for that, as we are.
You can always amend, we can always amend the drawings or whatever we need.
Well, we...
I just don't want to have to spend another twelve grand to get another engineer out here and...
Why don't we fix the basement problem first? Maybe that's going to be, who knows what? Does that tell us we do or don't?
I, I don't know, I don't s...
I don't know.
There's a, there's a, there's a lot of people that, that have beautiful homes sitting over a basement that leaks. It's just, it's where it is.
But we have people...
But they don't live down there.
Yeah.
We've got people operating down there.
We have people operating down there, but I understand that, but you could, they're op, where they're operating, what's going on back here is, is mental, the, the action is up high, up front here. That's where all the operating station. Now, there's some offices that were built, and you guys are, Brian, I don't, or Buck, you've been down there, but there's stuff, it looks like there's, we did one time down there, they must have did a show or something, because there's couches and there, you know. But in that area, which is, doesn't, I don't see where there's a need for that. I don't know who uses all, I've never been...
Well, most of that's not used. I mean, basically, just the, um, well, it would be, the, the table and stuff would be used once Gary gets back in good health. We're currently having our meetings elsewhere. But Don and Charlie, who's down there, Don's every day, Charlie's almost every day, uh, you know, they're, they're up off the main portion of the floor. Where, where the studio's at is dry.
And all the city records are down there.
Yeah.
But, well, I, I was just expressing the concern. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't spend all that money on an engineer just to, to, to scrap it. Because, so as long, as long as we have a direction that we, we want to go in...
That, that engineer stated that we need to put in, this is wide open, and there needs to be some baffles in it. It's a, it's a hazard, and that needs to be mitigated, that needs to be taken care of. I don't, we're going to have, we're going to do that. to be taken care of. I don't know. We're going to do that. Anything on that that's a safety issue is going to take...
If we own it, we should make it proper.
We should, you know. So...
Yeah.
Can you repeat the motion? Just to clarify. Do you just want to start?
Just cancel the contract?
There is no contract. Yeah. We have no contract. We just... All I want to do is we have no contract on doing the basement. We have no... We've talked to Dunsey. We've kind of gentleman's handshake. We're going to do it this winter, but we haven't signed any deals. So I don't know why we need a... And the boards, we want to start over. So do we need a motion and a...
Probably not.
You can withdraw your second. Withdraw your motion.
Yeah. I'll withdraw my second.
I'll withdraw my first.
Make it easy.
So do you want to proceed with... Martin said something about possibly proceeding with putting the proposal in the paper to get bids on the waterproofing of the basement? Or do you want to hold off on that as well?
We have no specifications. We have no drawings. We have no details. So we're going to be right back to the square one.
I was just asking.
No, I'm telling you, if we don't have details, you know, you're...
Yeah, because I didn't know anything about that side of the building until tonight.
Well, I heard that come out of Eric's mouth. I knew about it because Eric said something about it earlier, about a year ago. But that's how long it's been going on.
Yeah.
So we'll just... I think what we need to do is have... There again, we need to have a work session or something here. So I'd be willing to do that. Next meeting, I will not be here on the 24th. I will be traveling. But still need you to have a work session before the meeting, or let's talk about that.
Well, we've already got one work session planned, right?
Planned but not scheduled, yes.
Yeah, planned but not scheduled, yes.
So which one's the most important?
First in, first out probably. I mean...
Well, you could spend a half hour on each of them.
You say we can't do more than one?
Yeah, we could do two.
If each gets their due attention, you've been waiting. So you've been waiting for full attention on that issue, if you understand.
We all ready to move on?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Takes us to bill number 42... I'm sorry, bill number 4323, the second reading and ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for auditing services for Hope's Child Bloom and Company, LLC, certified public accountants of Washington, Missouri.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I can have a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Walton?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4323 now becomes ordinance. I forgot to write it down.
It's okay.
Thank you. Bill number 4324, an ordinance approving memorandum of agreement for Alliance Water Resources Incorporated and Missouri Corporation to modify the initial professional service agreement dated August 12, 2010.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Walton?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4324 now becomes ordinance forty-two fifty-two.
Thank you. Bill number 4325, an ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinance, Chapter 215, nuisances, Article 1, in general, Section 215.010, definition, subsection A, 13, as set forth below.
Can we have a brief discussion on this?
Yes.
So we still, I think, need to decide what our plan of action is going to be as far as if the city's going to do this and send a letter, or if the homeowner, is that correct?
I thought we were going to send the homeowner a letter, and then if they don't do it, we do it. I don't...
I don't think we ever decide.
Yeah.
I spoke with Gary. Gary, if you disagree with what I'm about to say, please tell me. But he made it sound like with the way this is changing, that it's going to be a very big job and more than his crew could handle or wants to handle at this time.
Originally, he's talking about we did it in fast, Buck would always give us a list, you know, where the buses would hit and things. But, you know, we usually wrap that up in a half a day, end of day. But, you know, we're going citywide doing it. You know, you're talking probably weeks of doing it.
Were we just going to proceed on properties where there was complaints called? Or are we just going to drive around and...
I'm just on complaints called.
Yeah, I was thinking that.
Yeah. I wouldn't be concerned about it.
Unless there's some...
I mean, just to bring all the city-owned properties up to 12 foot is going to be probably weeks' work with all the buyouts and everything.
I thought we were just going to do the bus routes.
Well, we were just going to do those that there was complaints about.
Right.
Yeah. That was my understanding.
But if we're asking the city staff to only address the ones we're getting complaints about, I kind of have an issue with that. If we're going to use city resources to get folks into compliance, and there are other folks that aren't in compliance, then we're going to expect them to do it themselves? I don't know what I hear you about.
Table.
Well, I think the initial thought was that we would do it the first time. But after that, it would be up to them. That was my understanding.
When's the last time we ever we did anything like this in the city?
Well, we used to do it all the time. There was no big issue. And I don't know what changed. Anything above city street, my thoughts were always that was we could clear it out if we needed to, because that the property owner would be involved.
That's right.
That's what...
Especially if it's somehow obstructing the easement or the roadway. He reasonably used the roadways. I mean, he was clear out your easements essentially. I guess from a legal perspective, you're passing the ordinance and it's a duty of administration, which would be essentially Mr. Toma, how to enforce the ordinance and to go forward unless you want to put it in an ordinance specifically how he's going to do it. He asked for some guidance, so he gets a little bit from the board. But really, it's up to him and his staff to appropriately enforce the ordinance. We don't like that. You have to... How he's doing it, but you have to address it with him and the board. Because you're not putting anything in this ordinance about how to enforce it. You're just saying that this is considered a nuisance. It's up to him to enforce it.
But even without this ordinance, if it is obstructing a city street, it may not necessarily be a nuisance, but it's an obstruction that we...
It's even clear easement, just saying maybe blocking a road, you know, a branch laid on the ground, but it's still a city code. So, you know, this specifies it more clearly so that, you know, if the bus doesn't go in, just to clear it off, just to make sure you have proper side distances and the trees are above the roadways only event a bus or a truck, and no, it doesn't bother. So, you know, I view it from a legal perspective similar to a squeaker. You know, you're...
Complaints about the call.
You know, road, you have to patrol it. Doesn't mean you have to have blanket coverage and nobody can speed anywhere. Because you're not going to... I don't know how prevalent this issue is. You see, I haven't noticed loading. I haven't really noticed them.
I have.
I run around and that kind of stuff, tell a lie. But it's going to be a project going forward. But it's more of a... That's an administrative question, if that makes any sense.
I think Park Chief and I have discussed it too, for the park. How tall is our new one?
Eleven foot six and a half inches.
So...
So hopefully it gives us barely six inches of clearance.
Right.
And there's several trees around town now that would be an issue for us. One of them is blocked in here.
Right.
On Forest Street.
The semis that come deliver the mail, they just scrape trees the whole time way up merchant. So, I mean, it's definitely an issue.
Mm-hmm. We've got to make a list. We still have one right here.
It seems to me we can approve this, and we're going to leave it up to Barton to decide. He can get input from us at any time. So I think we go with it. So, is that okay, Sidney?
Thank you.
So we have... What do we have? Do we have a first and a second?
We do.
We have a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Walton?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4325 now becomes ordinance forty-two fifty-three.
Thank you. Takes us to new business, bill number 4326, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a real estate contract with Bogie Creek Properties for the sale of five acres on Progress Parkway.
Can we talk about this for a minute?
Sure.
The only thing that's... You know, he wants this rezoned. We had the question, are we just going to rezone the one property and just let it go at that, or rezone the whole thing? Or what did we?
Well, I think for this property, we're going to have to... If we're going to do it, we're going to have to rezone it.
Yeah.
I don't think we have to rezone everything. I think the zoning board will have to make a decision on this property. They're not going to be...
For right now, we're just going to rezone this property.
Yeah, we'll rezone this property and make this...
That's fine. I'm ready.
You know, that gives us other options on any other property.
Right. That's what I wanted to left.
My motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. So any other business? There's another business. I'll call this meeting. Thank you.
I don't know. I love you.
With tomorrow's news today, this is Headlines with a Voice.
Within the past few days, I've read several articles stating that Hillary...